The Reddy Board Executive Committee to order, the committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch board committee meetings online at TCaps.net backslash board. And recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Before we go into a public comment, I do realize this is a difficult day for the board and myself as well. Obviously with the passing of fellow trustee Bird. Yeah, it is difficult. We will make it through this meeting, but we are here to get through the meeting at this point. And so I do appreciate the service of you guys and especially with, I don't know if you weren't in this morning, correct? But Erica had the unfortunate of chairing a meeting right after we found out and I've at least had some time to process and it still is difficult. So I know you won't be here for a little bit, so if you wanted to say anything.
Yeah, I just think, you know, I'm really shocked like everybody is on the board and in the administration. This was very sudden and unexpected to all of us and, you know, I think just we're all really preoccupied and struggling to deal with it and process it. But I want to just, I just want to raise up that Holly was a trusted and revered member of this board and an incredible mother dedicated to children and their best interests. And she really represented, you know, our values wholeheartedly and we're gonna miss her terribly. And I can just say, looking back on her two plus years of service on this board, right off the bat, she made such an impact in her first six months by advocating that our graduation entire policy be changed to allow Native American students wear memorabilia of cultural significance. And as a board, we passed that without any kind of issue, you know. It was, but because of her leadership, it was brought to our attention. So make which Holly Bird will miss you.
Yeah, I would say more, but I don't think I can, so. I don't want to give, you will understand me as well, but. So the committee has set aside, moving on to public comment, the committee has set aside this time for public comment. Is there any public comment?
There's none.
Okay. Um, good reminder. So moving on to procedural items, so we had draft meeting minute portion of the agenda, are there any changes? There are no changes, remain as posted. Social Host Responsibility Proclamation Resolution, I'm gonna defer to Connie Taylor, but before I do, if there is any questions, I'm just not gonna partake in this item at all, just because of the nature. I previously abstained from any discussion. I will add that last year, I believe, a couple of trustees had asked for some changes, which I said, go for it. But I, there wasn't really a conduit to do so, so if Connie, I guess if you can just act as the conduit, because there was, someone had some issues with language and I just said, I'm not getting involved, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So what we did is last year, there were actually just some questions about some additions, because it had been pretty exclusive to alcohol. So the request of the board was that we also add references to, you know, recreational drugs, tobacco, and then also including in that, and you'll notice there's a notation down at the bottom, just to give more of a clear definition of exactly what we're talking about when we're referencing alcohol. So just giving a little bit more definition. So what we did was take those revisions that the board had worked on last year and again included them in this year's resolution. So there are no additional changes over those which the board had recommended last year and had also approved. So this is the time of years we start to get into, you know, different parties and celebrations, whether they be graduation or otherwise, where there may be libations or things available that we make a conscious effort to make sure that those stay out of the hands of students and that people engage responsibly.
Which I do believe is a problem, but I just don't understand. Okay. Any other questions on that before?
No, thank you for those changes and yeah, I think it reads well, so yeah.
Um, but staff appreciation on special recognition on May 5th or next, defined during.
Yeah, so this is right on the cusp just before our, you know, May board meeting. So for our April board meeting, we really, you know, to be able to identify this and recognize it for the board, it'll be proper for us to do this at our April board meeting. But we have that special recognition that is in front of you. Again, it's a board meeting, it'll be read, and we are working on, again with our limited resources and laws as far as GAZB and all those things of what we can even gift, it's not much. But we are, we always try and do some small token of our appreciation to our staff. So as a cabinet, we're talking about last year, we did not pads with all their name on them. And so we're having some different discussions on what we might be able to try and do with, within some of the supplies that are very able to do in that. So again, we, I wish we could do more in that. But again, obviously our resources, we try to put as close to the classroom as we can and federal and state laws with spending don't allow us to do really anything with gifts. As the board knows, the board doesn't ever get anything very extravagant, generally kids, things made by our kids and things that I know the board very much appreciates.
Absolutely.
And, and that's what we, you know, are trying to do as well with our staff, so we're working on that, you know, over the next week here, so.
Dr. Viner, can I also, I want to add too, one of the things that TCaps has decided to do is look at it as staff recognition. What you might see out there, sometimes they'll reference that week as being teacher appreciation, but there are other times of the year where it's bus driver appreciation or food service. We've decided to dedicate and do all staff and honor them all at the same time during this, that period of time. So sometimes if you don't see, if you hear another district doing something for a state bus driver appreciation, like, what we, we like to do and recognize every person who touches children and education at every level during this, this one week. So we have one wonderful week of celebration for all staff within all buildings and departments, regardless of the position that they hold.
Great. Next item of board policy, defined Connie Taylor.
Finally, you all, this one is easy. All of the revisions and updates that had come through subsequent to our overall new policy adoption. So as we move forward, what we will be doing, anytime we get special updates or those quarterly updates or new policies, we'll be bringing those as one offs to the district. So we have literally moved mountains. This is, this is, will be our norm hopefully moving forward. What you'll notice is that there is a new policy that will need to go on for a discussion item. It's policy forty-one-one-three and it was adopted or enacted to represent the new Michigan Earned Sick Time Act, also known as ESTA, that is now in effect, went into effect February twenty-first. So this is all statutory. But just as a side note, most of our groups here are covered by collective bargaining agreements. And so any of the ESTA provisions would not go into effect until the expiration of those agreements. But even having said that, what we currently do in terms of sick time, our administration and how we work exceeds the minimum requirements of ESTA. So there's very few changes that we need to do. There's a very small group of individuals working for the district who will be impacted. We're doing all the appropriate notifications for them and implementations of the requirements of the statute. But our board policies do now need to reflect ESTA and that's what being brought before the board. Really no elections or, you know, choices that we can make. If you're really interested, I've got a, like a ton of webinars. If you really want to dig into ESTA, I'd be happy to give you.
I have way too much ESTA to worry about.
I mean, don't forget Beth Pack, she might.
I'd say this one you're not, you're not gonna want to.
It's available.
Exactly, that's good.
Um, okay, so moving on to agenda reviews, obviously we, yeah, we already had to, as I said, thankfully we're trying to keep it positive, it's not because of the passing. We already had the resignation, obviously, that we had to fill on the seventh. And so one thing that we do have to add is, is I need the board to lay out the select, the process for selecting a new board member. We do have a time limit, so we have to do this very promptly, unfortunately. So today was the day we're gonna adjust the, we're gonna add a discussion for the open board position. I know we had at the end, is that the best spot? I was trying to, I was trying to think if we should just get it out of the way and just.
Do it first.
Do it first, it'll be fairly quick, I think.
I think so.
And then sort of just do that and then we're in the process that we don't have to come back and it's usually a little disorganized at the end. So if we can just move it to the item between five and so be item six.
Before the super.
We already have a. Between five and six?
No, it's not. It's the discussion of the open board position.
So.
So it's number eight right now.
Oh, you want it moved up?
Yeah, to move it to six, so before the study.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay, I understand.
Wait, why am I not seeing this? Are you on agenda seven for special meeting?
Seven, yeah. Right now it's on eight.
Uh, you know what?
Oh, it looks way too.
You know what, you know what, that's because I printed it before.
It was updated.
It looks like yes.
Right here, okay.
It's right there.
Okay, okay, it's, yeah, I printed it before. Yeah, it's all good, okay.
So it was here.
So you basically want to do it before the study session plan.
Yeah, we're just getting it out of the way.
Yes.
Fair enough, easy peasy.
And her resignation was effective Saturday, March twenty-nine, so it would have been thirty days.
We have through the twenty-eighth meeting to make an appointment. So just for the record, what I will be proposing is to say that we're, and this is just what I'm proposing to the board, is gonna say something like, we're gonna, I don't think we've just done this process. I would propose using the existing applicant pool that we just had. And then we, I don't think we have any speeches or anything that goes on and we just, on the fourteenth, because we've done that process, part of that process. If, and then on the fourteenth, we will just have a voting mechanism, which is a bit that I would like to do, because I think it's very fair to have the rules down before the meeting. And then we do a other fourteenth.
So the seventh, we'll just discuss the process and then on the fourteenth, we'll actually execute whatever we decide.
As my, that's.
Select a board member. Select a board member, okay.
And as my proposal, obviously the board gets to choose how they do it, but.
Yeah, y'all can figure out the details. Do you want to ask them questions again?
Do you ask them, do you open up the whole process like?
Do you have a discussion or do you just have a vote? Yeah.
I get it, so that will be my recommendation, but yeah, I'm sure there's different, and we can tweak it and do whatever. Did the voting way we did voting last time work? Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to make sure that everyone knows the rules, so it's a fair process.
There will only be five of us. Josie will be gone, right? For both, both of those, the seventh and the fourteenth, okay.
She'll be gone for the seventh and fourteenth and then if, if the board for whatever reason on the seventh said they wanted to on the twenty-eighth, Josie will be here, but I would not be, either way.
Oh, okay.
I don't think I'd be, I really don't.
Well, for the record, I'm, I'm in support of what y'all decide. I mean, this was so close in time with the applicant pool that we got and so I think it makes sense to just revisit that.
If they're still interested, obviously we have some, you know, if the board chooses to do that, we'll reach out to them to see if the candidates are interested still and all that, so.
Yep, and any board member can bring up anything on the seventh, that's just what I'm, just publicly, that's what I'm thinking in my head and what I've kind of.
Makes sense.
Is what everyone's gonna want to do, but could be different. So that is to be determined, but that's what I'm gonna be suggesting. Um, is there any other changes to the seventh? Obviously it's, it's a basic.
President Newman-Bale, just one additional thought. I wonder since at the time we filled the vacancy for Andrew Raymond and all of the candidate, the finalists got to give up to five minutes.
I did, yeah.
I kind of wonder if maybe now that we're filling a different seat, that maybe they could be given a three-minute opportunity to speak again in case they want to say something a little different.
Which is, is true, and not everyone did get to speak, which was the other part, because it depends if the board wants it for the complete pool, then.
And the balance on this board is very important. We, we look at the professional skills people bring and,
Oh, yeah.
You know, if they have children or grandchildren and what, how old the kids are, and you know, it all comes into the picture.
And that's kind of why, when I, when I was making my thought process is, I was, you know, do you use just the finalists or do you use the entire pool? And there was, I think we voted on the, to narrow the pool based off of.
Finance.
The makeup and the finance.
Elementary school.
And so there's certainly enough that has, that could have affected the first vote. Not that we need to do, make it overly complicated, but yes, to your point, that is, and again, those people didn't get to speak at all. So we can definitely incorporate that discussion. And again, the board gets to decide, I just try to come with a, with something that I think is palatable to everyone and see what you guys say.
Thank you.
Okay, no other changes to the seventh, so we'll move on to the fourteenth. Actually, I just deferred to Dr. Maring on this one.
Um, for the meeting of the fourteenth, so we're all set then with, with the study session.
Yeah.
Okay, we will have our standard call to order, our pledge, our approval, recognition. We do have TK, our next group of TK's Compass Award winners. And we actually have also had a request from a group of our STEM students to come and do a presentation to the board. So we will do that in that section.
Is that about the manufacturing innovation centers or?
I believe this is actually a part of the kids that have been traditionally assignment tech kids.
Yeah.
I believe at West, that wanted to just come and talk about their program.
Sounds great.
Yep, and then we have our first public comment, our superintendent's report. We will have architects for Central High School, our music projects and central grade here. That is, you know, pretty, getting pretty serious at this point now. And so it'll be an opportunity to hear some of that, you know, from, for the board, what's come out of the visiting sessions for those and just to gauge the board's thoughts moving forward, if we're continuing on that track, if, if that all fits with what the board is thinking. Let us, let us later update, my guess is that won't be much. I don't expect much to happen until May at this point. They are on spring break this week, the legislature, so we'll, we'll, again, probably not have a lot there. And then our district highlights, lots of great things going on across the district we'll be sure to highlight. We'll have our committee report outs for curriculum committee, our finance executive, our sustainability committee and our nutrition and fitness committee, the name of it today.
I can, yeah, I was just gonna say for the board curriculum committee, Beth is gonna give the report out and then Erica will give the report out for, yeah, for office hours and then attending will be pack.
Oh, yeah, and then who's giving out the report out for sustainability? Is that Taishen?
That is, yes.
And Hardy, obviously for finance now, okay, all right.
Um, and then board office hours again. Erica, Erica, you're going to be doing it for?
Yes, I'll be giving out Josie's report, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
And then I'm supposed to attend the twenty-fourth, but I have to take my daughter somewhere.
And so you've got to.
Beth asked if she would switch with, like, she said yes, so.
All right, excellent.
When we put it on the office hours, can we note if it's virtual?
Oh, good idea.
Just so I don't have to ask you every.
Yes.
It's kind of helpful for tracking purposes, right?
Yeah, which it is, which month, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, because at some point, we're gonna want to revisit, you know, how it's working.
Yep. So under consent, again, personal recommendations, we have our course catalog with developments that was pushed to the full board from the curriculum committee, field trip, field trip requests that are there. Then we have capital projects, our facility storage building, Traverse Heights furniture fixtures and equipment and West Senior High renovations. And then meeting minutes from the study session as well will be there. We will, under discussion, our school safety update as always, and the social host responsibility proclamation that you reviewed earlier. We will have our staff appreciation special recognition that we reviewed earlier, the board policy that we've already discussed. And then we have a donation from the First Congressional Congregational Church of Traverse City. They're a church at the base of Old Michigan Peninsula. And they have given a very sizable donation that the finance committee did move forward this morning that is for extracurriculars for children. That's in the area of a little over, I think, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-six, twenty-six, five, five, yeah, twenty-seven.
And then we'll have our second public comment, board president closing remarks and adjournment.
And trustee Moon Warren, just to give you a heads up on your discussion, as my designated, you will be, you will have the privilege of reading the social host responsibility proclamation resolution and the staff appreciation special recognition.
Oh.
There you go, bam.
Thank you, thank you for the heads up.
So practice up.
Picture I can read what I'm saying, what I'm reading.
Get in front of the air, exactly.
The question just on April fourteenth, because we've had these at committee meetings, but I'm wondering if we could just acknowledge Holly and like, I don't know what.
So I think that's, I think we can absolutely do that. I don't, I guess what I would ask is the board a little bit of, just grace of the moment for us to figure out what we want to do. I, a communication just went out and we acknowledged that we would be recognizing Holly at that, at this meeting.
Okay.
I think Scott's got some questions in, we're, we're trying to figure out, are there some very proper ways, especially with, you know, our, our Native American, local Native American leaders to properly do what we think Hollywood would have liked? And so I think we've got a little legwork to figure out there to do and then where that fits in and how to do that, if it's invited guests. So I guess I would just ask the board as leeway to let me to work with Scott to figure that out and we'll put it in the agenda where it feels proper.
Yeah, I just, I know what's proper, it's my, I know what.
I just want to make sure we do something.
And we, and we said we are, we publicly intermediate release and an email that just went out to all of our families and staff.
Okay, the informational items, HR, defined to Connie Taylor.
Yeah, so just very simply, we, you know, we're always talking about where we are in terms of staffing. Last month I reported that our retirements, they kind of slowed down. But just by way of summary, we have right now within our teacher unit, twenty-five retirements that we have had, that will be effective for the next school year, which is higher than we normally see. And they, they do come through on the personnel report, but sometimes not seeing them all in aggregate because they're coming in in batches, so twenty-five is a pretty substantial number. And we also have eight resignations and most of those resignations are based on individuals who had taken leaves of absence and they need to notify the district to notify us by March first if their intentions of returning or if they're not going to return. So several of those that are on the consent agenda this time under personal recommendations are individuals who mostly are for childcare and have decided, yeah, I want to stay home and, and continue to raise my kids and not come back at this time. So at that point, that shows you thirty-three different vacancies across multiple areas. So as I expressed last time, we do have general postings up for our core areas for special education. One other one I do want to highlight is that we recently had a resignation, unfortunately, due to a move out of Traverse City of our coordinator of our Indigenous education program. So obviously a very important program for our district, that posting is out there. So I would encourage individuals to, to take a look at that as well. And but overall, we're pretty pleased with the, not only the quality, but the quantity of applicants that we're getting for the vacancies that we have out there right now. I was, you know, secretly, you don't really like to say it out loud, they'll never let them see a sweat, but secretly concerned about special education vacancies. But we are seeing some increase in the candidate pool. So that's making us feel a little bit better on our end from that, from that piece. And as usual, we always have our, weekly, we update our job postings, they're on our website, but certainly anyone could feel free to give our HR office a call. And then our next open interviews will be on April sixteenth, which is a Wednesday. We alternate between mornings and afternoons, so that one is one of our morning ones, half of eight to ten AM here at the Glenn Loomis Administration Building, thousand nine South Oak Street. So stop in, talk to members of our amazing HR team about interest for going into next school year. It is not too early to put in applications for those positions. Because, you know, secretly also our love war recruiting, we like to get the very best. So as soon as we can get those applicants in and reviewed by our administrative team, supervisory team, the better. So feeling pretty good about where we are staffing, I know I shouldn't say that, knock on wood. But for this stage of the year, things were looking pretty solid for us, so we're thankful for that.
Okay. Any other questions on staffing update? Communications update, defined to Ginger Smith.
Thank you. Other first thing I'd like to touch on would be our strategic planning and just to provide you some data to go along with the work that's being done prior to all of the work ahead of all of you is we did recently complete, as of March eighteen, the surveys. We totaled four thousand seven hundred and thirty-six responses of that, the largest group being students. And we did have twenty-six hundred students who participated in that survey. So that was really exciting to see that participation number be so high. So that was great news. And then this week, we've been hosting focus groups around the district, both yesterday and today. And we had our student senate classes, both at Central High School and West Senior High School take part in that. We also had a parent, both in-person and virtual options. And tonight we have a virtual session for staff. So it does, they were all smaller groups. I think our lar, our largest event was around eighteen. Uh smaller groups I think our lar- our largest uh event was around uh eighteen. Signed up I'm not sure how many actually a- arrived and that was at West Senior High last night. Um but we had thirty parents signed up between the two buildings so um so really exciting to see. Uh that the numbers did come through for all of those events. The next thing I wanted to touch on is just uh I I keep your eyes open and be aware that we will have some banners. Uh great um congratulating all of our graduates along Front Street between Rose and Railroad so we'll have twelve of those on display. So we're excited for that uh the the banner program is kind of going away a little bit in Traverse City which is kind of a bummer. Because we were hoping to kind of grow this initiative a little bit each year more and more uh and give a little competition to. The Fisher Marathon banners that you always see uh gracefully adorned along Front Street every May so. Um so not sure how how many will be able to grow that number by but we will have uh twelve banners. Three for each uh I'm sorry four for each of the three high schools um.
How do the kids compete for that?
The kids do not it's simply a banner representing each high school.
Oh okay okay.
Graduations graduates so.
Their names.
The targets the matrix.
Got it yeah because when you travel through small towns in Michigan.
Yeah pictures.
We don't have enough halls.
We have seven hundred.
How did kids graduate every year?
Right exactly.
Yeah adopt a foot of grand via Parkway yeah no so.
Just wanna now I mean one thing I have seen in yards is yard signs of the graduates that the two high like primary high schools do at least. To honor the graduate I love that it's like Joe Esper and now it'd be Ben Berg going out in the dark of night putting a yard sign. You know to honor the graduate.
I think they give it to the parents to be honest with the dogs.
Well okay I always like to fantasize that that was what was going on so yeah. Maybe it was Tammy actually back then anyway alright back to you sorry.
So anyway just uh just wanted you to be aware of of that and uh keep your eyes open for that hopefully they will look fantastic. Uh they will go up uh May nineteen and they will be on display through June thirteen so. And then finally just a donation update um as you know we are always uh so grateful with our student support network to receive. Uh donations of all sizes and uh we did recently just receive a a check for twenty six thousand five hundred and eighty two dollars and eighty six cents. From the First Congregational Church of Traverse City uh Katie and myself will be um in person thanking their congregation this Sunday. Um and we're just beyond grateful for the opportunity to attend and and to thank them in person for for that um sizable donation that they provided. Um and I did want to offer just a little bit of a heads up just because I I love data and I love to share data. Uh the total donations for SSN um during the twenty three twenty four school year totaled forty seven thousand one hundred and two dollars. And the SSN department does not have a general operating budget. Um we have uh funding that comes in for um both grants foundations and fundraising. Um as well as private donations and then for McKinney Vento we are federally funded. Um which of most of that funding is um to cover um administrative salary costs. So um with taking this year into account and knowing the work that we're doing to try to grow that program to. Provide as much as we can for the students in need between July one twenty twenty four and January thirty one of twenty twenty five. Uh we have thus far uh received eighty eight thousand three hundred and fifty three dollars.
That's awesome.
So uh we are proud of the work that's been done we have a long way to go um. For the money that we do receive specifically SSN knowing that the McKinney Vento arm is is through that federal funding program. Uh we can really just try to always uh stretch the needs of that um SSN nu- numbers and uh sixty seven percent. Of what we do receive is based on foundation and grant money twenty two percent coming from businesses and individuals within our community. And twelve percent through uh local fundraising events so every dollar counts and we are doing our absolute best. To ensure that we are providing the absolute basic needs knowing that without those basic needs being met there is there is no learning happening. We need to ensure that we can provide food clothing um and 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 bedding and. Items that students need to get a good night's rest in order to be able to come to school and learn. So I just wanted to put a little emphasis on the success of that program and and to thank um with an open heart to uh the church. This weekend for that sizable donation.
Absolutely that that is a major.
That wasn't included in the number either it's that that wasn't included in the number.
Correct.
We're a hundred and fifteen now from forty seven so yeah.
Thank you for reporting out on that it's really good positive.
Yeah. Katie Kubash and and yourself Ginger um Dr. Van Wagner I mean I think y'all have done a great job of really promoting the SSN it's it's shown in the numbers. Right how much the community has heard of about the need and wanna support our students.
Absolutely.
I think it's and hopefully can do because everyone who hears about it every event they've done everyone hears about it.
Yes.
Everyone thinks they've heard something incorrectly of both the number of needs of students uh that have and then the. Low dollar amounts that we have to work with so I feel like we're we are making progress and hopefully can continue doubling and tripling it for a few years.
And we talked about this um when you first came on and the 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 organization of the SSN was kind of all over the place and so it was sort of consolidating. And that was sort of your vision of like consolidating hiring Katie to come in and and really manage and because I kept saying I don't think people understand how to donate. Or where to donate or what does it go to and I think like we're just really we're getting there I mean I think when groups get together. Whatever groups community groups businesses and and they want to donate the you know it's known now what it is and where it goes so. Like it's really wonderful.
There's not many other donations you can make where a hundred percent of it goes into programs for. Things that you would be really happy to see it being useful.
Hmm hmm.
So yeah.
That is all I have.
Thank you oh Ginger could you just go back over the no total number of um strategic planning surveys I heard twenty six hundred students out of four thou- was it four thousand total?
Yeah so the numbers uh incomplete we had a total of four thousand seven hundred and thirty six that breakdown included. Students totaling two thousand six hundred and eighteen. Parents totaling one thousand four hundred and seventeen. Staff totaling six hundred and thirty five and community members at sixty six.
Thank you and I just wanna note I was impressed with the um participation. Three years ago we had two thousand responses that time and we've actually surpassed that. Um which is I mean a good sign people are complacent you know we see the value in this so. That's great work and and really thrilled to see how many students I'm sure there were some teachers involved in incentivizing that participation but nonetheless.
Yep.
You got it done they got it done.
Yep alright any other questions? Thank you um any other items? Uh again I do appreciate uh everyone getting through today. Hopefully every day is better but um obviously there's things posted online about some celebrations and and respect giving um coming up as well so. Um with that the next board executive committee meeting is Thursday May first at four PM in this room um. And uh with that the meeting is adjourned thank you.